Today is Wednesday, March 9th, 2016. It's 10:01. I call the meeting of Monongahy County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. And everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, very good. Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have seventeen exoneration listings this morning for $3,440.28. Fiduciary orders of March 9th, 2016. General County vouchers, $84,142.88, 911-494-90. Chestnut Ridge Park, $676.70. Camp Muffley, $1,003.22.33. Mason Dixon Park, $646.31. Assessor's valuation, $2,399. Peacock vouchers, General County, $10,004.18.34. Camp Muffley, $2,1231. Mason Dixon Park, $1,1664. For a total of $100,429.21. We have no employee introductions today or position vacancies for boards and authorities. Actually, we do, but we'll cover that in a few minutes.
Move for a second.
Have a motion, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We do have one item fiduciary matter that we need to talk about. Linda Cunningham Estate. We need to schedule a hearing for the removal of her personal representative. We have it scheduled for April the 6th at 10:15.
Do you need a motion on that? Move that we schedule it for April 6th at 10:15?
Second.
Did you see the order?
No, what's it say?
The order sets the time at 10:15 seconds. Fifteen seconds, not 10:15. It sets it for 10:00.15.
I move that we modify the order to make it 10:15.
That's ten and fifteen seconds after ten.
I amend my motion to allow you to change it to 10:15.
To include fixing the order? And second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I'm gonna sign this.
Don't sign it, she'll want a new one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Have to be amended.
Okay, thank you. All right, comments from the public. Open that. If you please rise for the record, identify yourself and your address, and you're free to speak, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name's Jerry Cochran. I live at 1137 Crest Drive, Morgantown, West Virginia. I've got a letter here, I'd like you to have one of the girls read into the minutes. It's just one page, basically.
Okay, feel free to read it.
And what I'm gonna talk about is a levy for homestead exemptions increase. I think it's time that the senior citizens with all these levies coming out. So I've put a few comments in here pertaining to these levies that are being brought out, and I think that all these people that are representing the levies should amend their levies and request that senior citizens' homestead exemption properties be exempt from the levy. I think that one way they'll get what they want, the senior citizens will be able to buy bread instead of paying taxes. So if you give each one of them a...
Did you want her to read it, or did you want to read it?
Can you read that one, please?
Please have a copy.
Renata, if you could go ahead and read that.
Thanks, sir.
You can have a seat and wait, if you like. Renata, go ahead.
Dear Mr. President, Heldon Callen, I do not know how or what the rules are to get a levy put on the ballot to raise homestead exemption for senior citizens, only occupied Class II property from $20,000 to $80,000. I believe it has been twenty or more years without a raise. I believe you, Mr. Callen, once stated, "Why are senior citizen property tax based on today's market value when we know that they are paid for their... when they paid for their property years ago? It should not be based on speculated market value today. I believe unrealistic and speculated market values have no financial meaning or benefit to senior citizens who have no intention of selling their home. Therefore, I ask all the other levy representatives to support this homestead exemption levy by amending their levies to exclude the homestead exemption properties or to join together and bring the homestead exemption levies to the ballot on its own. This way, the other levies might have a chance to be approved because senior citizens will not have to decide between bread, medicine, or taxes, and those still working will be more acceptable to favor levies. Since the previous assessor brought in the Texas people to inflate market values on Class II property without regard to individual property characteristics and true value, this homestead exemption levy will go a long way to make sure senior citizens can stay in their homes and not be treated like tobacco, alcohol, sin tax victims every time the well-to-do wants something they can really do without. Now comes the overdue homestead exemption levy. If all these other sponsors of levies get behind this proposal for homestead exemption levy, I think we will have a much more harmonious outcome and prevent senior citizens from being treated like a sin tax bank fund with endless funds. Very truly yours, Jerry L. Cochran."
Thank you, Mr. Cochran, and as you asked me, you did quote me correctly.
Thank you very much.
I did say that very thing. So is there anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, just thanking gentlemen for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a nice day.
You too, enjoy the weather.
May I, I know this is kinda out of order a little bit, but if leave of the other commissioners, I would like to, sorry, the other commissioners, ask Renata to forward this over to Phil Magro and ask him to give us a legal opinion on this suggestion. I think it's a valid suggestion. Do you think that's okay?
Doesn't ever hurt to ask.
What's your thought, Tom?
Well, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, but I know for a fact in following the levy, you would have to have every one of those people groups to amend it, and they would have to have...
I know that, I'm not asking that.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking Phil Magro, yeah.
Whether it's conceivable.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's fine, okay.
Before we even...
Gotcha. Okay, that's fine. That's no problem at all.
I always like to make sure that...
Okay. I didn't understand, okay.
Yeah, it's just, and then if it's conceivable, then we can talk about...
Okay, that's fine.
About the approach from there. But first, we gotta know whether the legal basis for that.
Right.
If you could just seek Mr. Magro's legal thoughts on these, this suggestion would be appreciated. Okay, thank you very much. We normally don't deal with those things right away, but...
Right, that's fine.
I think that's more an administrative thing, and I just wanted to make sure that both commissioners are all right with that.
Yes.
Okay. Colleen, do you have anything on grants?
Come on down. Hi, Judy.
You what?
Him and the green shirt.
Oh, Green Day again.
It's not ours, it's... When is that, March 17?
It's just a good color to wear.
Looks pretty.
There you go, Judy. We decided ten, fifteen seconds after ten was a little...
It's a wearin' program.
Exactly. Thank you, Judy.
I have two grant applications. One is for the Community Corrections Grant for the Day Report Center. They're asking for $310,000, $132. It's for the funding period from July 2016 to June 30th, 2017. And then also, I have for a grant application for VOCA for 2017, and they're requesting $78,744.
Both these Community Corrections Grants?
Day Report Center's Community Corrections, and the VOCA's the Victim of Crime Act Victims' Assistance Grant Program.
Move for approval, second.
Yeah.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, thank you. Do you have anything else, Colleen?
Nope, that's all I have for you today.
All right. Who are all these different people?
Those are memos of understanding, they're for the contracts for the program.
The contract people there.
They just want you to get your hand worked out today.
Yeah, well, this other one, get my hand worked out too, that's for sure. Hey, there's that one.
I only have two.
Did you miss us the last couple days?
I did, I was very lonely.
Well, we're back.
Yeah, you got this.
Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence, Renata.
We have a letter from Phil Scott, who was serving on the Mon County Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency Board. He is no longer wishing to serve, so that is one vacancy that we will have. And that is just an at-large vacancy.
An at-large?
Yes.
So there's no particular qualifications left?
No.
No district qualifications or law enforcement qualifications? So we'll promote, we have an opening in Monongahy County Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Act. Maybe a rare agency.
Why are you looking at me?
You show up every meeting.
That's why we have to look at you.
We'll advertise.
That's a plus.
Yes, we will.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other correspondence?
No.
All right, unfinished business? Any unfinished business?
I don't have any.
I have two possible. One, remember we talked at the work session that we would have exonerations be sent 24 hours before? Did that, I didn't know if that had to come before, I wasn't sure, I didn't know if that was just an administrative, so I'm just asking you.
I felt it was an administrative...
Okay, that's fine.
They did that this time, right?
I don't know, because I wasn't here.
Oh, we weren't here to verify. All right, let's verify by next time.
Okay, so that's fine, I wasn't sure. The other is, I want to bring up an unfinished business, and it's just that we probably have to put this on the work session, but I think several weeks ago, I saw we did finally get a check from the Supreme Court for two years ago and one year ago, it was over like $110,000.
For the last two fiscal years.
For the two fiscal years. My question is, with budget time, we also have, we need to look at what we might want to do, and I just want to put that on the work session at a later time, so, because it's during budget time, but we have not heard anything from them, and...
Well, I'm correct. They have called me, I tried to, I tried to set a meeting, but things happened at the legislature, I ended up sitting at the legislature till late last night, so I didn't get a chance to get over and see them. It's in negotiations, so still not...
That's fine, okay.
But I will be given one in the work session.
Okay, thank you very much, that's great.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Okay, new business, consideration of appointments to the Mecca Policy Board. What do we got, Renata?
We have, there were two vacancies, and it was clarified later to me that there are specific appointments from the EMS and one from the Volunteer Firemen's Association. As attended the Volunteer Firemen's Association, and they have recommended that Gary Renner be reappointed, and he is interested, he did send us communication to say that he was interested. The EMS representative, Monongahy EMS, Lawrence Springer, Larry Springer, he is interested in being appointed, so if you want to vote on those today.
Do I have a motion on those?
A move that we appoint both individuals.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, thank you.
I believe those are three-year terms.
Yeah. Okay, consideration of appointment to the West Run Board of Zoning.
We haven't, we advertised this about six weeks ago, we haven't had any interest except for John Fulmer, and he is current, he was currently serving, and he is interested in serving.
We've interviewed him in the past.
Yeah.
And we've got, we've advertised all of these, but we've got no other... Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the reappointment, second.
Have a motion, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, thank you. And just for the record, that's West Run Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, yes.
Okay, consideration of appointments to the Monongahy County Urban Mass Transit Authority Board of Directors.
We also advertised this one six weeks ago, and have not had any response from anyone except for Jim Manila, and he is somebody that you have appointed in the past, and he would like to be reappointed for an additional three-year term, but that's through December 31st, 2018.
I move to appoint Jim Manila.
But you have Mr. Solomon as well?
Yes. We also have a joint appointment with the city, and I have been in touch with Linda Tucker, the city clerk, and she said that the city council have approved that, so they're just waiting on us to fulfill our part, so...
I amend that to appoint both individuals.
Second.
Yes.
A motion, second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, yeah, both that done. Reports from elected officials. Ron, do you have anything?
No, sir, no.
How about from, are you elected to come here, or are you just E.L. Robinson?
Just here for the fun.
He's a...
Torture.
He's a, he's a good man, he likes to come and participate, he's at our conferences and everything, it's nice seeing him, glad you came, otherwise that back row would be empty.
That's right.
Ron, do you have anything for us from Granville? How about from any of your other appointments we've put you on, you got a report?
You bumped me off with the Mecca Policy.
Yeah, we let you one day.
I let you one day.
Well, thanks, Ron. Okay, reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Just a report, when we were at the county commission association meeting, I guess I was a little surprised and concerned, I mean, we were fortunate to have both the governor and Senator Cole speak to us, but it is clear, when they spoke, that there's clearly a division down there of about $200 million right now, of the Senate wanting to hold firm, the House wanting to hold firm, and the governor wanting to hold firm, and just the concern is how that's going to affect the county and the state, and I'm just, I think all there is a very concern that there seems to be a friction and a block right now, and hopefully it can get resolved, and that's all I want to say. Yeah, that's all I'll say.
Thanks. Ed, do you have anything?
Just to note that all three commissioners did represent Monongahy County at this conference, and as Tom stated, there is a positive, however, I believe that Joe still is steering Bill 4009, the road bill, the local bill, so that's all that, and that's all I have to report, except welcome spring, almost.
Following that same thing, it went to the Senate yesterday on second reading, so it should be up today for third reading, probably around 11:30, 12 o'clock. The, I was pleased that the second, no, I think it was the third, no, second reading, I believe it was, of the 30-day exemption being removed from the hotel motel tax, that will be very helpful for our county. Of course, the Convention and Visitors Bureau automatically gets 50%, but that will be another 50% that we could use for various recreation and tourists, so by removing that 30%, I know the gambling concealer, particularly in Hancock County, the, I think it's Mount Mirror Races or something up there, they were not paying comp rooms here a number of years ago, and Hancock not paying hotel motel tax for comp rooms, they gave comp rooms so people would come and gamble and spend money. They contended that comp rooms should not receive it, even though there's a monetary gain by giving somebody rooms. They, Hancock County took them to court, and they won the court and the judgment for all the back hotel motel tax. Well, this group has been trying ever since to get that notified, nullified by legislation, by not only exempting complimentary rooms for those kind of activities, but also to exempt them from the judgment to Hancock County. That is, that has always been a grave concern for us, you know, if you want someone to come there and say, I will, you know, basically it works like this, that you come to my restaurant and spend X number of dollars at my restaurant, and I'll give you a room for free, and then you don't have to pay hotel motel tax, I mean, basically that's the way it works. So there, they had tried a number of times to add amendments to our bill, the County Commissioners Association bill, to remove the 30-day exemption, and they tried to again, but it has failed in committee, and so we got a nice clean bill there, and that's good. The third bill we're very much interested in is us in Ohio County in particular, is the TIF, what I call the TIF Cleanup Bill. Basically, it's a nice clean bill, but we learned a lot of things, the negotiations that I was particularly heavily involved with, with the DOH and the relationship with the State Tax Department and the Development Office and the Governor's Office and the different units, as well as Granville was in on that as well, as how we did the interchange and the roads and how the monies were paid. Well, this is, this bill, actually, it was Eric Nelson's bill, the Chair of Finance in the House, that said, you know, that everything works so well on this, let's codify it, let's take this procedure and actually put it in the statute, that this is how it works, this is how the DOH works, this is how the Tax Department works, this is how... So what we had, what we had to learn here in Monongahy County, less so in Ohio County, because that was just pure farmland, we were dealing with a different animal, so we had to cross a lot of streams and climb a lot of mountains that was not envisioned. So this bill was put in to codify that procedure that we adopted here in Monongahy County. Another issue Ohio County has been having is they are unable to get data, any kind of data, from the State Tax Department. Now, I had to sign away my first warrant to get data here, but I did, and we are getting a lot, a lot of the data we needed, but there's just an inconsistency, the way they handle things and the way we question things. So Ohio County, County Commissioner and I and Brian Helmick, we were all at the session yesterday, we did the whole thing, because Senator Romano from Harrison County had been pushing a bill to extend all TIFs, or TIFs, 13 of them really, 14 of them really, to extend all TIF from 30 years to 40 years in the County Commissioners Association, as are we totally opposed to that. A well-planned project, properly put together, if you follow it statutorily correct, TIFs are a tremendous tool, but they can be a tremendous burden if they're not used properly, and I'm very proud of this commission that we've held to our guns to use the TIFs in a proper fashion, and they wanted to extend it to 30 to 40, while it was defeated twice in bills, it was added one more time, tried to add it one more time on the floor, but it was soundly defeated, it was by voice call, but I think only three said aye, and everyone else said no, so that was, that, it claimed it was for 13 of them, but in effect, it was for one, we all knew it was for one, and we just thought that was improper, especially to tack it on to our bill, which has nothing to do with expanding or changing the TIF, it was just codifying what we'd already done, so I wanted to report that. This morning started at 7:45 with Safe Communities. We're gonna have tonight at our Leadership Forum hosted by the City of Morgantown, the, we've got two visiting accreditors, I guess, call them by name or whatever, from the Safety, National Safe Communities Group. We, as you all recall, back in 2013, when we started the community leadership forums, one of the safe communities came and presented where we could establish ourselves as a safe community. In that particular meeting, as I talked about this morning to the group, in that particular meeting, I said, well, a lot of people, a lot of students and a lot of people that work at the university don't necessarily live in Morgantown, why is it just a Morgantown WVU thing? We got the other towns, Granville, a lot of students in Granville, Star City, Westover, and throughout the county, as well as staff, and so they decided and planned, and there was a letter intent, and so the county, the City of Morgantown, and the WVU established an agreement to work together to get accredited as a safe community. That is what their visit is for now, to give us that designation, so they'll, they've got things going on today and tomorrow, but they'll be at our Leadership Forum tonight, the group will, and they emphasized that we are the first safe community, and there's like 6, 50 or 60 of them throughout the United States, we are the first safe community that involves a cooperative between City of Morgantown, Monongahy County, and any university. So they really, they've really given us quite a, quite a kudos, that, and President Guy was talking this morning that he'd been to other places to where counties, cities, and the university, none of them would talk to each other, and it was just impossible, so that they are really excited about having us as the first designated unit, and it started back in 2013, the first designated safe community unit to have all three entities intimately involved, so it's all part of the leadership, and it's all part of, I believe, the county commission and the city's willingness to recognize we're all in this together, so...
Sir, I think I said something, I just remembered.
Okay, please do.
Since we're talking about kudos, the Granville Fire Department received an ISO reading from the insurance department, we dropped them from four down to a three.
Fantastic.
There's only two in the county, which is Morgantown being the one, and Morgantown the second, there's only 3100 in the country at that rating.
Fantastic.
So they did very well on the ratings. So they did very well on the rating.
Congratulations. I'll pass on our congratulations, and that is excellent work. And I know it's from the leadership down there in Granville, and I really appreciate that. Pass that on to them, please.
I will be.
Okay, that completes my report. Is there any other business or issues?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion second on favor, aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.